Good evening, welcome to. Are you turned on? I'm on, I think. Is it coming through? Welcome to the May 11th meeting of the Manchester Town Council. Apologies for getting started a few minutes late here with a pretty full agenda, so there was some paperwork to get out. You know, budget information, we have annexation petitions, and then we have a traffic event outside, so we... Some folks may have had a little bit of issue getting here as early as normal. First order of business is close the business meeting and open a public hearing on ordinance 247 related to the FY22 budget.
I'll make a motion we close the public meeting and open for discussion of ordinance number 247 relating to the fiscal year 2022 budget.
I'll second that.
Motion, second, just point of clarification, it's close the business meeting.
But I'm sorry, close the business meeting for...
We knew what you meant. Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Is anybody here to speak on the budget this evening? There's a couple things which may interest people. Do we receive any additional comments?
We did not. No emails, no phone calls, nothing.
Okay. Well, if nobody is here to speak on the budget or the tax rate, then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and resume normal business.
I'll make a motion we close the public hearing and resume normal business.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, we kind of skipped over this part, typically we do it before, but now we're starting our general business meeting. If you don't mind, we'll rise and pledge allegiance. All right, thank you. We did get a comment, we're gonna try to speak into our microphones a little better than last month. These masks don't help, they're kind of muffling and making it more difficult to speak up. First order of business approval, March 9th minutes. Should have those. Were there any comments, additions, or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion we approve March 9th, 2021 minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
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 We have treasurer's report from March 21, you should have that. Were there any comments? If none, do we have a motion to receive the treasurer's report?
I'll make a motion we received the treasurer's report from March 2021.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then same with the check register, treasurer's report to file next month, we have the April 2021 check register, the motion to receive.
I'll make a motion we received the April 2021 check register.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Mayor's report, a couple of things here today. We received a request into the town. We get these from time to time, we don't always do them, particularly if they get too political, just I personally choose not to. But this one is a proclamation recognizing in here in the town of Manchester that we recognize childhood cancer awareness month for September, so they're getting their ducks in a row, and hopefully others are doing this as well. So I'll go ahead and I'll read this quickly. So this is proclamation. Proclaim to the citizens of town of Manchester, whereas the American Cancer Fund Children and Kids Cancer Connection Report is the leading cause of death by disease among children between infancy and 15. Tragic disease detected more than 16,000 of the country's young people each year, whereas one in five of the nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Whereas founded over 27 years ago by Stephen Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family and American Cancer Fund for Children, the Kids Cancer Connection Inc. is dedicated to helping these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, family sailing programs, pet therapy, and some other things. So therefore, now I, Ryan M. Warner, mayor of town of Manchester and state of Maryland, do hereby proclaim September 1st to 30th, 2021, childhood cancer awareness month. So, other announcements. I'm gonna start with the bad one. I think Steve put this online, so he doesn't have to say it publicly, but it's like the Manchester Volunteer Fire Carnival unfortunately is canceled again this year. So, please continue to find other ways to support the fire department. I know there's been a handful of other events, the food pickups and those sort of things, so it's important that we continue to support them where, you know, like some other businesses, they've lost one of their main revenue sources. Yard waste pickup on Wednesdays will continue through November. Water shut offs, we are getting to the point now where we've had some different water rules over the past year during the pandemic. We do need to move forward with getting back on a regular program with our water. If you have a balance due, please contact the town. We are willing to work with folks. So it's not our goal to shut off any water, but we do need to get back on that regular schedule. And then next Tuesday, May 18th, is the town election. Polls will be opened here from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We'll hold an election for three council spots. So we have two council people who are not running, unfortunately, and we have councilwoman Deborah Howe is running. We have one other person filed, and there'll be a third seat filled by write-in. So I mentioned Deborah Solis, I mentioned David Richardson, former councilman, he is running as well. That is all I have, but I do, if you guys are okay with this, I see that Mr. Matthew Fryer is back here. This may be a long meeting, so I'm offering to bump you to the front if you want to have a quick conversation and not do this during the questions and comments from the community portion. So do you mind coming up to the microphone?
Good evening, mayor, town council, and residents. My name is Matthew Frye, president and creative director at Citadel Skateboarding Foundation. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization with a mission of community engagement and mentorship through skateboarding. In 2018, I founded the Manchester Skate Park Project to fundraise and rebuild the Manchester Skate Park. In that process, we hosted several popular skateboarding-related events, bringing in visitors from Baltimore, DC, Philadelphia, and Virginia to this small skate park in Manchester, Maryland. We hosted our first summer skate camp program at Manchester Skate Park in 2019. The skate camp filled up quickly and was received very well by attendees and their parents. So well, we planned and expected to expand to Westminster and Tawnytown in 2020. However, nothing happened in 2020. Citadel Skateboarding Foundation would like to offer our skate camp program at Manchester Skate Park for two weeks this summer during July. Skate camp will run Monday through Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to noon with a rain date on Friday. Our team will be there for setup and teardown from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., in the dates you have in front of you, I believe. I am here this evening to ask for your permission to bring our skate camp program back to Manchester Skate Park and offer the Manchester community a fun and exciting alternative to staying inside this summer. Thank you for your time.
So, I don't want to speak for everybody here, so everybody may have some questions for you. I think there may be some, just some logistical things that we would need to work through in terms of
Of course.
Whether it's, you know, insurance, or background checks, volunteers, you know, kind of like, I think a little more meat around this. So I don't know if we're in a position right now to give, and again, you guys jump in with and like, and Steve can weigh in too, to just kind of say, oh, cart block, you know, hey, go start advertising, but rather maybe work with the administration here to come up with a list of things that would kind of have to be checked off.
Absolutely.
Does that cover?
Will this be a fundraiser to improve the skate park down here?
No. No, this is not a fundraiser.
It's not a fundraiser, it's just like a drop-in?
It's a skate camp, summer skate camp.
Register campers.
Right. I just think that there's gonna be, like, the mayor said, we just need to get together and discuss some logistics as far as insurance, liability, background stuff.
Sure, no worries at all.
Some things that are concerns, but that's my really only concern about it.
I think...
Who's he worked that with, out with you?
It would be, right, it would be myself, sure.
Would it be any different from what they had to go through in 2019?
I believe, you know, I recommended a background check.
So they didn't do that back then?
We did not.
Okay.
Oh, we did background checks the first year.
Oh, you did?
I don't know if you received them, but we did have them for everyone who worked with us.
Didn't, well, we have, we've been, we've been, it's been passed on to us from Chief Hess as far as a company, I believe it's down in Randalls Town that does the background check, so, you know, we could work that out. We need the logistics in regards to insurance, and we have to, you know, we have to make sure, you know, our people, our employees are not tied up, you know, and that we can, you know, we can, you know, work with, at our schedule, in our schedule, you know, so.
And I think, it basically is the same kind of standards like the rec council would do, you know, so you guys are a 501(c)(3). And I don't know that we necessarily want the background checks here. Typically, I think what we do with the rec councils, we ask them to certify that they did it, and that they meet whatever the test is.
That would be fine.
Yeah, I mean, because then we're making the judgment call, we don't need people's information in here. So, yeah, I think that's probably the way to go, just the same thing the rec council does.
Any idea how many people to expect? I wonder about traffic, how traffic might be?
Last year, we, or, I'm sorry, 2019, we cut it at 10, but we could have gone further, and we wanted to, but we didn't know how it was gonna be or how we would work. But we were very successful, and we have a really good program, so we're hoping to bring on 10 to 20 kids per session.
Now, with this being a camp, does it have to be connected to wrecking parks with their summer camp requirements and things? Does the county have certain requirements for different camps and things that would need to be followed?
I can't answer that, you know, I'm kind of looking at this as a standalone, you know, summer camp and trying to... I guess I would, I downloaded some information from Carroll County Wreck and Parks and what they follow.
Okay.
So, yeah, but I don't think it would fall under...
But I didn't know if they had, like, certain requirements or restrictions
Correct.
in a camp-type situation.
They do.
Okay.
They do, yes.
So I think that's probably where we are at this point, I think, right, it's not really... Who should be the point person? Or I guess you probably know what they are now, so we probably just need to have a certificate of insurance, and then what you probably have. Then just to cover those dates, and then work through the background check piece. If you, it sounds like you probably already do those things, but...
Yes.
But does the background include fingerprints that you normally do?
Uh, no, they do not include fingerprints.
Okay, I think that's important if we're gonna be dealing with children.
I'm not an expert in this kind of thing, I would say they should probably do what direct programs do. Whatever it is that they're doing these days, 10 years ago, they didn't do anything, and now they, they basically work with one of those companies.
I did download the information off the Carroll County Wreck and Parks website, but then I'm also following Chief Hess's lead on, you know, background checks for, you know, people working, especially people working with children. And I was following his lead, and he gave me the company down in, I believe it was Randalls Town, that does that.
Yeah, there's a number of them out there, so you could use that one or whoever else.
In 2019, we just used an online company, I believe. If you can send me the name to the Randalls Town firm, we can certainly go to them.
Sure, that's no problem.
Yep. Okay, I think it's...
It's great, thank you.
All right, then we'll move into town administrative report.
Good evening, mayor and council members of the community. We'll go ahead and start with the April 2021 administrative report under pending items. Nothing at this time as far as opioid litigation, or the Trout Unlimited Project, the tree planting took place on April 14th, and approximately 250 seedlings were planted at the former skate park location. The AT&amp;T Mobility Lease Agreement update, we're still in negotiations with them, both town staff and also our attorney. The Main Street tree trimming did take place in mid-April. The sale of the 3215 Long Lane property, that's an agenda item which will be coming up in a little bit. Last month, I talked to you a little bit about the county and municipality memorandum agreement as it relates to the Stormwater Management Permit. That is an action item that I would like to get the council's approval to give Mayor Warner permission to sign onto. This is the second generation of the MOA. Our town attorney has reviewed it and gave us a thumbs up on that. So that's an action item that I would like to take care of this evening. The wastewater treatment plant discharge permit update, I sent an email to MDE in regards to our concerns and questions the town has on the draft permit. I did receive a very vague response back. Town staff did have a meeting with our engineering firm on 5/5 to discuss the changes to the permit and the impact it would have in meeting these limitations. Rodney has a little bit more information when I give his report on Public Works in regards to it. Code enforcement, we're aggressively moving forward on issues concerning 3201 Main Street and its condition, and 3395 Main Street in regards to stormwater runoff from the property, as well as the number of untagged vehicles on that site. You've also been supplied the monthly code enforcement update, you have that in front of you. Under miscellaneous items, I'm trying to get the Civil War Trail sign relocated to in front of the historical center. To give you a brief background on that, the original Civil War Trail sign was located where the old skate park was, where the Trout Unlimited Project is happening. When we thought we were gonna do a stormwater management facility there, we had it moved to the parking lot. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of damage done to it at the parking lot, somebody's backed into it a couple times. So I want to try to get that relocated to in front of our historical center where our war memorial is located. So I think that would be a fitting project right there, so. Also, I'd like to welcome Mr. Neil Hollingshead to our staff. He comes onboard as a wastewater operator and brings a tremendous amount of experience with him from Howard County and Montgomery County. Also, I'd like to shout out to the baseball group and thank them, they've been doing extensive painting and added some stonework around the lower ball fields. Really looks nice back there, they've really done a fantastic job. Under COVID-19 update, as of 5/5/21, our vaccinated employees will be allowed to enter residence and businesses to do maintenance on water meters and any water sewer emergency that may come up. This can only occur with permission from the property owner, and employees will still be required to wear PTE. We kind of halted that, of course, through the pandemic. We were able to do as much work as we could outside the residence. We did have a couple extreme emergencies where our people had to enter, and they protected themselves as well as the residents. So my last item, in closing, I want to mention to councilpersons Wilder and Smith from our entire staff, thank you for serving our community over these last two terms, both of you had two terms, and your valuable leadership. We really appreciate that. Staff appreciated that along the way.
Thank you.
And please do not be strangers to the town. Come back and visit us every once in a while. But thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for me?
I just have one about the Civil War sign, because it's a trail sign, but does it have to be over there? Like, where the trails actually were?
No, in the general area.
But it's okay, so it's okay to move it.
Yeah, I got that cleared through that group, and they said yes, it would be fine there.
Okay, thank you.
So, under my report, the only action item that I have right now is the MOA between the county, I'm sorry, the county and municipalities MOA as it relates to stormwater management.
You have one going, handle that now before we move into Public Works. So Steve, just to clarify, what that motion would be, would be a motion to authorize me to sign the MOA between Manchester and the county related?
Yes. Yes, correct. And if you recall, the first generation, I believe it was 2014, all the mayors signed it, also all the commissioners signed it. So it's a joint effort between the county and all the municipalities.
All right, I'll make a motion that the mayor can sign the MOA as it relates to the stormwater management permit.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, any other questions about the discussion? If you don't know, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank, make sure.
Now you can.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Were you guys able to hear, I guess the people here, get the gist of what that was? I know, I had my microphone off. Okay, I'll leave it on. Moving to Public Works.
Okay, you have in front of you the April 2021 Public Works Report. Also, the first sheet that you will see is the monthly water and wastewater data report for April 2021. Of course, DPW and all of our departments are continuing to work in a safe manner by following our COVID-19 safety protocols. The Water Distribution System Risk and Resiliency Assessment, which is an EPA requirement, has been completed. Director of Public Works completed that and submitted it on April 8th of this year. That reassessment is every five years. The York Street Water Tower, of course, I mentioned that we're still in negotiations as far as the contract, but they also, both AT&amp;T and T-Mobile would like to do proposed antenna modifications. We received those drawings in, our engineer is currently reviewing them, and we'll be responding back to those folks. As I mentioned before, our operator position was filled April 26th by Mr. Hollingshead. Underwater, the Wanted Street well, Spring House electrical repairs has been completed. We've started moving forward with the interior piping upgrades, and this will be completed by our own personnel. The Park Avenue Water Tower Rehab Project, work began the second week of April and is progressing very well. The completion deadline remains the same as Wednesday of June, Wednesday, June 30th. As you can see, there's some struts coming out from the Park Avenue water tank. They're getting ready to put the containment on, and there'll be a containment, like a canvas containment over top of the tank. So when the folks get in there to sandblast the tank, since it's in a residential area, the sand and whatever dust won't, you know, come off of the tank and go out into the neighborhood, so. That's a pretty, pretty extensive project up there, if you ever get a chance to ride by there. Those guys don't get paid enough to be on top of that tank, I'll tell you that right now, so anyway. Under wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant UV disinfection system upgrade, they had a kickoff meeting on April 14th. That project's moving forward, and that's been, as you know, that's been completed by an outside contractor, SWAM Electric. I talked a little bit, excuse me, about the wastewater discharge permit. We had that virtual hearing on 4/7. We did meet with our engineering firm, and, you know, that's gonna delay the work that they're doing as far as the E&amp;R project. So you'll be hearing more about that over the next several months. I'm still waiting a response back from MDE, so. Under our parks, mowing and general maintenance and mulching operations continue. We did have our annual outfall screening inspection on 3/31. Two of our, two of the three outfalls inspected, that's gonna require some erosion and sediment maintenance on that, and we're gonna address that after the new budget comes out after July 1st. Now, kind of to elaborate on that a little bit, so every year, the county comes out and inspects at least three of each municipality's storm drain outlets, where it outfalls into wherever drainage basin. And we had two out of the three that need some extensive work done, so that's gonna be an outside contractor doing that. But again, that won't be till after July 1, when the new budget comes out. Any questions for me on Public Works?
You wanna keep going with the police report?
Sure, why not?
You're on a roll.
I'm with you. I'll walk out my front door and I'll look up at the top of that tower and see those guys and just...
Yeah, they don't get paid enough.
Nerves of steel.
I was by there today, and one was standing right in the, it was crazy, it was just crazy. Okay, Chief Hess is tied up, of course, on the gas leak on Main Street. Give his report for April 2021. For the month of April, we handled 254 events. This included citizen calls, dispatch calls, on-view incidents, et cetera. 131 were calls for service, and 17 of those calls were for areas outside of the town limits. Investigated zero Part 1 crimes, but we did arrest and criminally charge 13 persons for various crimes and violations. They included one warrant arrest for theft, drugs, and first-degree assault, two for DUI and drug-related charges, two for traffic-related charges, one for second-degree assault, and seven for traffic-related charges, which included no license, revoked license, et cetera. Our traffic enforcement continues, and we have issued 374 warnings, citations, and repair orders. Again, I'm asking town residents to slow down and stop at the stop signs. Kids are out playing right now, and it's your town, help keep it safe. The countywide year-to-date stats are still showing a 26% increase in the total number of overdoses reported when compared to 2020. The year-to-date is 144 cases. Year-to-date fatalities for 2021 is 22. This is a 70% increase over the year-to-date fatalities for 2020, which was 13. The municipalities account for the following: Manchester, one, and there was one just outside of the town limits; Hampstead, six; Sykesville, two; Tawnytown, 13; Mount Erie, four; Westminster, 49; New Windsor, two; and Union Bridge, zero. That's it.
Any questions? I know the chief's not here, but any questions or comments either on the police report or on anything else that you presented? Okay, moving on. So the beginning of the meeting today, we held a public hearing related to the FY22 budget, ordinance 247. As a reminder, we did introduce the tax rate and the budget previously. The tax rate remains the same at 21.6 per $100 of assessed value. Prior to us moving forward this, I'd like to again thank the staff and all the folks, all the work that comes together to work on these budgets, including this group and your input. I know I've said it a couple of times, but I think it does warrant repeating, that we have the second lowest tax rate in the county of any municipality that has a police department. So the only one that's slightly lower is Hampstead, but Hampstead, as you probably aware, has a lot more commercial development, so we're, in my mind, probably the most efficient town government, and certainly some of the other ones have gotten a little bit out of hand in terms of what their tax rates are and what they provide to the citizens, so. That's a testament to everybody that works here, to this group, and to holding things where we can, while having extremely good results right now, so. Any other discussion or comments on the budget? If not, or maybe it makes sense, Kelly, do you want to give a few highlights?
Sure.
And then maybe people can weigh in if they would like to.
Absolutely. So, one of the things I'd like to go over is some of the capital items that we are looking to fund for the upcoming year. So in the general fund, we plan on doing the sidewalk replacement down at the Old Town Hall, the Historic Center, we do that. We are looking to do some fence repair to the tennis courts. We are also looking to replace our 2003 dump truck. We plan on doing, continuing the road repairs, and we are looking to add an additional toy in Christmas Street Park and replace the metal slide. So it's kind of highlights. We're gonna put, look to do some signage down at the nature center for their trails and get that put together. Maybe we can find a scout who would like to be able to do a project, but that's something that we, the nature center would like to do. We, there is something this year, one of the costs that we are now incurring is the landfill is charging $30 per ton for recycling. And we average about 20 tons a month for recyclables, so we had to bring that into the cost. We still encourage people to do that. And then in the water fund, we are looking to continue with the upgrades as far as well pump replacements, and we are looking to purchase another vehicle, both in the water fund and sewer fund. So it's kind of a big year for vehicle replacements, but that should, you know, get back on one schedule. We tend to keep our vehicles a little longer than they're, than those people do. You do get a lot of wear and tear with the salt and so forth. And we're gonna continue with the permalogger, which are, Steve can tell you a little more, they're devices that are put into the water system to help, help us find leaks, because as you know, that is something that, you know, the town is very conscious about. And then with the sewer fund, we plan on, again, buying a vehicle. And then with the sewer fund, we plan on, again, buying a vehicle. And trying to think what else we're doing here. Uh, we plan on doing some, um, major maintenance at the spray fields as far as trimming around the fencing, um, cleaning up some of the areas. We'll continue with.
I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is it?
I can't hear you.
Sorry. Do you want me to repeat that?
That's a little better.
I know, I wanna take this off. Um, but with the, um, spray fields, we're gonna do some cleaning up around the fencing, um, where the trees from adjoining properties, um, have kind of encroached and, and damaged some of our fencing around the spray fields. That's about it.
I can't hear you still.
I apologize.
Maybe just because I have a big mouth, I don't know.
So all, uh, maintaining the current rates that we have.
One other thing that we probably should state, and, uh, folks probably wear, like, it's just been a much different year. We expect to be receiving some money in some fashion at some point from the federal government, filtered down through the state. We don't know what kind of strings are gonna come attached with that, or, um, you know, exactly what the timing's gonna look like. So we did work to make this budget self-contained and not counting on some windfall that may come at, at some point with some strings. When we have more information about that, obviously, we'll get that information out there. It'll probably be tied to infrastructure projects, so we'll, we'll look at the infrastructure projects needed by the town, um, at, at that point. So this, this budget, we did like the rest of them. We do every year to cover, uh, capital items, operating expenses, and then be financially solvent in, in the taxes that we collect is, is what's going towards this year's expenditures.
Correct.
Anybody have any comments or action on, uh, on the budget?
I would just like to thank town staff for all their hard work on this. This has been a challenge, trying to make sure we get all the things in place that need to be done. It's a great job on that. Thank you for all your hard work.
Without raising taxes.
Yes, without raising.
And not being able to meet like we, what we had in the past, where we'd sit here till 10 o'clock at night and bring in pizza and cupcakes and... Well, none of that stuff this year. Anybody like to make a motion on the budget?
On accepting the ordinance? Does that the motion work?
I think you approve ordinance 247 related to the fiscal year 22 budget.
All right, I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number 247 relating to the fiscal year 2022 budget, maintaining the current tax rate of .216 cents.
I'll second it.
Motion seconded. Any other discussion?
Good work.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a budget, so no, no government shutdown here. Next item, Lippi annexation agreement. I know we have some folks here. We also have our attorney, Mr. McCarron. Do you wanna, you wanna weigh in here?
Sure. Um, so since we met last time and we got direction as town staff, uh, from you all in terms of what you all wanted to see, uh, the agreement underwent a couple of drafts. The first one was the red line version that I sent you just so you all could see, uh, the language I had prepared and that town staff had reviewed to initially propose to the petitioner. Uh, they, we then sat down with, I sat down with the petitioner. Some changes were made. In all events, the, uh, annexation agreement, uh, which is largely agreed to between the parties with one notable exception, uh, is the one attached to the resolution that's up for your consideration. Uh, and it's kind of where we ended up on all of this, again, with one exception. Uh, the where we ended up with, uh, was, uh, first of all, on, uh, section 5.2, uh, I think we came to an agreement as to how to sort of regulate the issuance of building permits to assure that the development does not outpace the road improvements, uh, that are called for, not called for, but, uh, it's called for that the parties cooperatively work toward. Uh, on 5.3, uh, the language, uh, on open space, uh, that we talked about, basically, it says that the parties will work cooperatively to maximize, uh, the percentage of land that will be dedicated to open space and indeed, uh, usable open space. Not, we haven't used the word usable, but, uh, open space would be appropriate for recreation. Keep that one in mind because that's the same language that you'll see in the Patriots overlook. That's where we ended up on that. Uh, section 5.4 is where we ended up with on, uh, the issue of clustering. Basically, uh, limited clustering in a manner so as to not reduce the minimum lot sizes permitted in the town zone within the district, uh, in which the property will be zoned. Sections 8.1 and 8.2 are where we landed on working cooperatively with the SHA in terms of, uh, the, the off-site ro- ro- road improvements, the alignment of the intersection and all of that that we talked about. I think both sides are fairly comfortable with that. It gives the town a seat at the table when those discussions are underway with the SHA. We all recognize that at the end of the day, it will be SHA's call on all of that. The point of contention, however, has to do with section or paragraph 10.1. I've noted that with a bubble or comment next to it. This has to do with the, uh, laying, uh, installation of a sewer main, um, that, uh, and, and laterals, which I'll talk about in a minute, um, and is the apparent crux of the disagreement between the parties. For, uh, and in case the Sharmill Drive properties and their septic's in the future were to, uh, fail, the idea here is it would allow the town to, uh, proactively and, and quickly meet an emergency that one or more of those, uh, houses may have in terms of their septic's failing. It would allow them to hook up very quickly and easily. Essentially, what the town has indicated to the other side, uh, that we want, all of this would be on site in the sense that it would be on the old town property. It's, so that's the part that's in town, at least in part. But recall that the, uh, the petitioner intends to develop, once annexed, both parcels together. Uh, so, uh, it's our position that, uh, we would like to see that, uh, that, uh, main, uh, installed with laterals to a cleanout where the homeowner, uh, can tie into in the future in case of a septic failure and in case, uh, it's, it's required. I would pause to also add that in the event of a septic failure, it's quite likely that the MDE would require the town to extend sewer service to, to the property. The other side, uh, as I understand their position and as most recently expressed in the letter from council that I have shared with you all, and I think was passed out tonight, is, uh, as I understand it, that they, they do not feel that, uh, some or all of that is a fair. Uh, and they take the legal position, it appears, that, uh, the town is not within its right to demand that as a condition, uh, to annexation. And they've cited some case law. I'm not here to argue. Case law, uh, as scintillating as that might be to about two of us in this room, uh, tonight, I simply will say that I disagree with the legal analysis the council has provided. Uh, and if anybody were to wanna hear it, I, I could provide why and, and, and the more, the greater legal analysis. Hopefully, that won't be necessary. What's before you, obviously, is the petition, uh, is the, uh, final resolution. And, uh, obviously, the, uh, annexation agreement almost completely agreed to, but with that one disagreement. So any motion that you might make tonight, I'd ask clarify as to which version, either developers' or ours, uh, you're conditioning the annexation on. With that, I'll, I'll end my comments on this.
Thanks. Anybody have any, um, questions on what Mr. McCarron just presented?
Is it, if we would choose to do this, is it my understanding that they have 30 days to respond to our requests?
Well, uh, what you could do, and it doesn't have to be 30 days, it could be fewer days, but, uh, uh, what you could do is, is make a motion to approve the resolution, conditioned on all those conditions set forth in the resolution and in the annexation agreement as the town has written it. And that, uh, the condition being that the developer, uh, petitioner would sign the annexation agreement within some period of time after tonight, 30 days, 15, whatever.
Okay.
Uh, and that if not signed and accepted by the developer within that timeframe, that the approval of the resolution and annexation would be null and void. That would be an appropriate motion to make.
Okay.
You know, tonight, if, if so desired.
And is 15 days, if we choose, is 15 days a proper amount of time?
Yeah, I wouldn't give, I wouldn't, uh, you know, I, I, I wouldn't take, give them or require less days.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say. Uh, 15, 30 days, something like that, seems appropriate to me.
All right, thank you.
If I may.
Go ahead.
If we deny annexation, the developer builder still is gonna build homes there.
Yes, and within, you know, partly in the town and then partly outside.
Right. And how would that look compared to our version if we allowed the annexation? I know we're covering old ground.
Sure. So, uh, on, through the subdivision, uh, process, the old town part would undergo our processes. There's certainly some conditions that, uh, the planning commission could impose on that. You know, we probably are in disagreement about what, you know, would be reasonable conditions, but they certainly can impose, uh, conditions. On the county side, obviously, you don't have any control over that. That gets developed outside your control and, uh, in accord with whatever the, you know, the county regulations and determinations would be in that regard.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, I, I, I don't have a vote. I think one of the things that really during this whole process moved my thinking on it was the, the potential benefits of a layout developing it as one parcel, one community. And the fact that not moving forward with some sort of annexation or conditional annexation could result in more homes being there because of the three. So like, I think part of it was R15, and then the, the county off conveyances, there was like seven or something, and then a part of it was like R20 or something. So it'd be kind of disjointed and would, could result, you know, in, in 50 or more, which is, you know, 10, 12 more than I think what we're talking about here. So anyway, I, I don't have a vote. That's just kind of what, you know, where my thinking is on it. I like the, the conditional piece that Mr. McCarron suggested. You know, I think, I think it keeps us in the game. And having that seat at the table to be able to, uh, have some, some level of influence on how the land is really in our community, whether it's, whether it's i- i- considered to be town or county, it's in our community.
We can go ahead and make a motion right now, is that correct?
I, yeah, I suppose, I mean.
Do that, or do we want further discussions with?
Just to give everybody a chance to, to speak, I think. I mean, that's, you know, I, and on Muland, I'm not sure where, where Muland is on it, but I, I would, I mean, my, my suggestion would be, I don't think that reducing it from 30 to 15 really buys us very much anyway. I, I would say 30, and it's a month. It, it gives, you know, an opportunity for a little more conversation.
Yeah, I was just asking. I wasn't sure what the proper term was.
Just, just my thought. And, and, you know, the recent conversations with, with Tom, that's kind of like a new, a new piece as they've been, um, negotiating out the, uh, the pieces of a possible conditional approval. Can't reach an agreement on it, then it is what it is.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead. I'm, I make a motion that the town council approve annexation resolution 3920 relating to the petition to annex the Lippi property under the conditions set forth in the annexation resolution and annexation agreement, and that the annexation agreement attached to the resolution as drafted by town staff, including as to paragraph 10.1, be executed by the petitioner within 30 days. If the annexation agreement is not signed by petitioner within 30 days, the approval of annexation resolution 39-20 shall be null and void.
Motion? Anybody make, anybody second? Just for the record, is everybody declining to make a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion is, I won't make Vince read it again. Say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, can, can we raise hands for?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Or nay?
I do have a comment now. I did not wanna say it before anybody voted.
Okay.
But I'm gonna make a comment. And I don't know if everybody else here feels the same, but I feel like this has to be said. It has been a pleasure working with everybody from, for the Lippi annexation, okay? I've, I've enjoyed it. I've learned a lot and listened to what everybody said. But I will tell you, if I had to vote on Mr. Webb's comments and his letters, I would have never voted. So I'd like to have that documented because some of the things he wrote in these letters, to me, is inappropriate, bullying, and I don't think it's acceptable. So I, I just want you all to know, you all have been great, but if it came to that, I would have never voted. Thank you.
Okay. I shared that sentiment. I was a little taken back by that letter.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that.
Okay, motion carries. So I think, Mr. McCarron, you have, uh, a little bit more work to do.
I do, Patriots, or, well, on this, yes.
Yeah. Anything else before we move to Patriots? Okay, Patriots. Mr. McCarron, if you wanna do the same thing?
Sure. Um, uh, here, uh, both parties did reach an agreement as to the entirety of the language. On the annexation agreement, I don't believe, and I'm not aware of any disagreement as we sit here today. So what you have in front of you is the final form. Once again, uh, I provided to you the original red line so you can see kind of how it was all created and how it, it got pulled together, uh, with, in consultation with, with town staff, Mr. Schaefer, who represents the petitioner. The, uh, again, the highlights are the same, uh, for the most part, uh, in, in two respects. One, on the open space, again, the language that we just heard about, Lippi is i- in the Patriots overlook. It seemed a, a good compromise and a good, uh, you know, a, a, good language because we don't know yet what the percentage of open space can be, would be, uh, et cetera. And then also on the issue of clustering, which was raised, the same language basically has been accepted. That, uh, clustering would be allowed, but not to reduce the size of, uh, we would reserve the right not to allow a reduction in the size of the lots, uh, you know, from the, from the minimums, uh, size as set forth in the district into which it's being zoned. So, um, that, uh, basically is before you now, final form, all agreed to. I don't think there are any disagreements between us and the petitioner on the language.
Any questions for, uh, the town attorney?
I still think one of my concerns going into this, rather than saying the town reserves the right to prohibit clustering, I would have liked to prohibit it in advance. Or let me say it a different way. There's two types of clustering, and I would not even attempt to describe the two. But my concern is not wanting anything less than what it's zoned for. zoned for. It's R-20, R-20,000, half acres. So I wouldn't want any lot to be any less than that.
Yeah, the, the way we have it draft, at least right now, is, if I can find it here real quick. Yes.
Section five, section five point five?
Yeah, there it is. Okay, yeah, thank you. Five point five pursuant to the town code, section two fifty dash eighty-five, which is already in the code, the town reserves the right to prohibit or limit the clustering. So, the language at least as written may not be as strong as Councilman Wilder might suggest. That's, that's the way it's currently written.
Any other questions or comments for the town attorney? Is there any action? Does anybody on the council want to make a, a motion on Lippi? I'm sorry, on Patriots overlook?
And just so I'm clear, it is R-20, so it's all half acre lots, is that correct?
Yes, R-20.
Okay, just want to be sure.
Unless they cluster, if they get approval to cluster, it could, it could reduce the size of the lot.
Say that again?
Say that.
If they get approval to cluster, it could result in reducing.
To, to have, if I'm clear, the half acre lots, that's what they originally started constructing.
Right now it's zoned for half acre, R-20,000.
Right.
If they get approval on a certain type of clustering, they could say, we'll build on a quarter acre.
Got it.
And we'll give the other quarter acre back to the town as open space, or whatever the town would like to use it for.
I think the way that's written there, and I think where Councilman Wilder's, I think, because I'm, I'm not trying to speak for you, is that that decision, the way it's written now, will be made during the development process.
If it's not made here.
In planning and zoning.
It would be made by planning and zoning, not knowing who will be on planning and zoning a year, two years from now.
Yeah, I think that's what he said.
Yeah, my concern is the same as Councilman Wilder's with the clustering. I want to maintain the originally advertised lot size from the beginning, that where we're headed.
Well, they advertised one plus acres, but I don't remember how that's all laid out. What would be annexed now would be, where he's annexing now would become R-20,000.
Half acre. And the concern for the community was just that, the reduction in size.
And the way it's written now, correct, says that it would go to planning and zoning to make that decision, not us.
That's correct.
I have all the faith in the world in planning and zoning as it stands now.
I do too, but.
As it is now.
Mm-hmm.
The portion that's in the county, that's zoned R-20 right now?
No, it's R-40.
R-40, okay. The portion that's in the town is R-20? Gotcha. Well, is, I guess I'm asking here, is this one not ready, or, I don't, can, can we just change something in there, but then we don't have a meeting of the minds?
I mean, I, you could do either. I mean, you could punt it for, you know, further discussion on that item, or you could make a motion, you know, much as you did before, but then add the further condition that section five point five be revised to upfront, you know, prohibit the clustering, that, in a way that would reduce the lot size.
That's really up to you guys, how you want to proceed.
Don't know if Mr. Schaefer's here or not, I haven't turned around, but he, he may want to weigh in on that, I'm not sure what his preference is.
Thank you, I am here. As you know, we think that the clustering option is something that should be looked at when it is put, if and when, and it probably would be, put on paper in a design that would show you where the lots would be located, what the sizes would be, and how the location of those lots would relate to surrounding properties, how the, how the open space would relate to opens, to other properties. Obviously, the topography of the open space. You know, in the past, I know that, from my experience in the distant past, open space sometimes gets a bad name because the developers take their unusable space, because of topography or elsewise, and call it open space and go, see, we gave you the three acres of open space. And that's no longer the case because municipalities have wised up and look at it now more carefully, and they have staffs that are a little bit more sophisticated. But to, it seems to us that to foreclose the possibility of open space in advance before we see these, the design, doesn't make sense. And I know from your discussion, I, you understand that this would, this would go through the planning commission for review and would not be approved unless they approved it. And so it would be, and of course, staff would get a chance to weigh in on, with their staff report, yes, we think this is good, or no, we don't think it's good. The community would have an opportunity during the review of the subdivision plan to weigh in on it. You know, after the public hearing, we had a, a long fifteen minute discussion out, out on the sidewalk with a gentleman that was adamantly opposed. And he told us that if he'd have known it was going to be clu, we, we had presented two designs, one of them was a cluster, I think, the design that we had showed your staff and you, and he had, he had seen that for the first time that night. And he told us out, out in the, on the sidewalk, gee, if I didn't know you were going to do that, I probably wouldn't have opposed it. And I notice he's not here tonight, I forget his name, do you remember his name?
I don't.
Yeah. He was one of the gentlemen that owned one of the adjoining lots that he had bought. So anyway, we understand, we just, well, we, we would prefer the option of at least presenting a plan that had smaller lot sizes than 20,000, could be sixteen, could be twelve, could be eighteen, you know, whatever, but they, and, and they, it gives the designer of a subdivision more leeway to design something that he or she thinks makes sense, and then you get a chance, or your planning commission, your town and the planning commission, get a chance to look at it and see if you agree with it. It doesn't increase the number of lots. It just rearranges them, it's like a puzzle piece. So, we would request, and we have, I think Tom made clear, you know, we've agreed to, you know, everything, including the right that, that you reserve the right to review that pursuant to your town code. So we would request that you consider allowing this to go through so that we can do an, I think, what would be a nice development. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any questions or any more information on this one?
So, do I hear then, if it's not annexed, the county portion would be R-40 acre lots, and town would be R-20 half acre lots if we did not annex. If we do annex, everything becomes R-20, unless they cluster, it could be something less.
I think that's right.
I think that's what I heard.
Any action or further discussion? Anybody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that the town council at this time not approve annexation resolution forty dash twenty relating to the petition to annex the Patriots overlook property.
We have a motion, is there a second?
He said to not annex, I'll second it.
Yes, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion for the record? Final questions? Hearing none, all those, well, we'll do hands again this time, and to be clear, the, the motion is to affirmatively not approve the annexation. So, being in favor of the motion is in favor of not annexing. So all those in favor of Vince's motion?
If, if we were to agree that there'd be, that we would agree to a clause that said there would be no clustering, I'm, I'm trying to preserve the right to at least consider that and come back like Lippi.
Fair, fair question, so, I guess I'll, I'll ask the board, we'll take this as the discussion, if the clause is written the way the Councilman Wilder suggested, would that change anybody's vote?
I would have probably a different opinion on it.
I don't know how the vote comes out. Either way.
Just to clarify, that would be, your posit, your statement was that we reserve the right to not cluster?
That's what it says now.
No, I think that's what it says now. Dale would like to, I think it's, is it five five, I think?
Minimum of R-20.
I'm not sure that's what I would like, I would just point.
I just want to make sure I'm remembering what you, you had recommended.
Yeah, I think.
Dale's recommending that.
I'm not recommending anything, I was just concerned.
That's it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We, we would agree to a clause that says no clustering in the annexation agreement.
Which is the minimum of R-20?
Which results in 20,000 square foot lots. If you, if you put that in the annexation agreement, and I think that's, obviously becomes a condition of the annexation, I get, Tom McCarron will weigh in on that, but that, that's what I heard Councilman Wilder describe as his desire, and that that clause not say, which by the way, I think that's in Lippi's agreement, but, but the clause in our agreement says that clustering will, that you reserve the right not to allow clustering.
Mr. Schaefer, do you mind hanging on one second? Stay at the microphone.
I'm going to withdraw my motion at this time for further discussion.
I just want to make sure we're following process, and so we were kind of heading down a path of, of negotiating something, of course, you're open, which is fine, but I didn't want to do it while we had it open, and then I didn't want to force a vote to then try to undo something.
I appreciate that.
So, the, the motion for the period of time right now is off the table so that we can talk.
As I understand the, the clause in the annexation agreement, it says you reserve the right to not allow clustering pursuant to your town processes. You, you under, that means that we could ask the planning commission to cluster, and you could turn it, the planning commission could turn it down. But I hear a concern that that's not strong enough for this, for this property. It was, it's in Lippi, but, but I get that, for some reason, it's the, it sounds to me like your desire is, as a council, to forever foreclose the possibility that could, that there could be a lot less than 20,000 square feet in size on that property. And what I'm saying to you is that we, if, if, that we would, we don't like it, but we would agree to that clause because we want to come into the town, and because we've worked with the town for two, two years or more now, and because we don't want to have a development that's half in the town and half in the county, even if they are 40,000 square foot, or, the county lets you cluster forty, don't they? R-40?
It's zoned R-40, there are going to be 40,000.
Yeah. So if, if, if we don't come in, there are going to be 40,000 square foot lots with the fact that they're going, some of the lots are going to be in the county and some are going to be in the town. So, we would agree to an annexation agreement provision that says clustering shall not be allowed.
Could you refresh my memory right now, as it says, without the annexation, how many, how many lots are in town and how many are in the county?
I can ask Marty Hackett to do that.
As far as the actual spread, in the county, it will get about seven lots there. In the town, and I don't remember, there, there was a total of thirty-six on the, on the one concept plan we had. So, there, I think there was ten if we clustered, or we, as we were looking, it was like ten or, ten or twelve in the town then, or in the county's jurisdiction, that the subject piece that would get annexed. So the difference is about five lots on the total project. The difference is we're, and again, I've said it before, we'd end up dealing with the town for one part of it, and then the county for the other part, so it puts all the control in the town. I did, if I bring up real quick, you mentioned about the, there was a sign out there with the one acre lot thing.
Oh, yeah.
Just so we're clear, the property, this property's always been zoned R-20, and the prop, property, the property that exists in the town. The property that's in the county right now is R-40, intended to go to R-20. But the lots that you're referring to, the one acre lots, were taken by off conveyance, there's four lots out there that were done by off conveyance, which is a way to create lots without going through a subdivision process, and that happened in the county. They coincidentally are your one acre lots. So technically, the sign, after they're sold, that should have been taken down because it's, it's, it's not something, we're never intended to do one acre lots through the, the town property, but if the property would not get annexed, the county's portion would, they would be one acre lots. They just would.
Marty, if I can add to that, when you, when we first worked on this plan where we had some in town, out of town, we had like nineteen of them in town that could be done before you bought that parcel, before you bought this extra parcel.
Correct.
So I don't know how many you could get on that parcel, but you're probably looking at what, 23 at least?
It's in town.
That could be done in town.
Yeah, so it's, it's, so it'd be a total of about thirty, thirty-one lots versus thirty-six or so. We've got a lot of design to go through, obviously, and stormwater management, because that criteria has gotten more stringent, so that may take up more space anyway, so. And our plan is, obviously, the, the goal would be is to submit the entire project to the town for review and go through the process. We have, the, you know, with the half acre lots, the whole job's done with, with 20,000 square foot lots, you can, you can only physically get so many on there, because just like I said, and still, until the stormwater management's designed, we, I, we're just giving you round, you know, round numbers. My guess is, no matter what, once the stormwater gets involved, it's probably going to be a little, a couple less lots to begin with. Any other questions?
Well, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
So, I, I, I think I heard him, we're, we're kind of doing this in real time here, that the Patriots overlook group would, would agree to whatever the no clustering language is, the, the minimum lot size of 20,000.
Yes, I, I understand it would just simply say, not that the town reserves the right, but rather there shall be no clustering, at least in a way that would result in a reduction in lot sizes.
Gotcha. So with that change, is there a conditional motion from anywhere?
Now, it's been agreed to orally, does it have to go through back and forth the process, or is it considered accepted based off of conversations that have happened tonight?
Up to you all, you can either put this off for thirty days, have us work on the language and come back and see it, or it's a fairly simple change. It would, you could also. It would, you could also do a motion, just tack one as a condition that section five point five read has previously discussed that there shall be no clustering in a way that would reduce the lot sizes.
You could probably do the same conditional thirty day thing and.
Yes. You could do it that way.
You agree to the wording, however you guys work it out, or it's null and void. But either way, is there a motion by anybody? Is there no motion either way?
I mean, I'm not going to be here, so it's very hard for me to say, because I'm not going to be here to vote at the next, you know. Meeting, so it's very hard for me to. You know, say, give it time and let, let them figure out the wording and things like that, I don't want to really speak for the people that are going to be here.
I'm not trying to speak for you now either.
Right.
If, I think if there's no motion either way, it's effectively tabled, and yeah, the council will be made up a little bit differently. But maybe gives the attorneys time to talk if we're not ready to make a decision tonight.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we see these changes in writing. Go forward at that point, after the attorneys have time to talk.
Well, that's a motion.
Yep.
We have a second on that?
Then I'll second that.
Motion and a second to see the changes in writing and then consider, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We do hands, I'm sorry. Opposed, so you unanimous? Okay, well then that's, that's where we are on that one. Any other discussion about annexations, final thoughts? So we've been working on these two for a long time, so thank you, Melinda, I thought those, those are good thoughts, I mean, I think you're thinking through, these are, these are difficult calls to make.
I just didn't want anybody to make a rash decision today, like thinking, without having time to think it through, that's all.
Yep, I understand. All right, next item, discussion of offer to buy the old police station, thirty two fifteen Long Lane.
Okay, bring everyone up to speed on this, the sale of thirty two fifteen Long Lane. We had an asking price of one forty nine, nine eleven, we did get a contract back that was much less than that. We have the right to counteroffer that if you would be interested in doing so. I just would like some direction on this, on how to get back with the possible contract purchaser.
Well, what was the offer?
I'd rather not disclose that in open session, it could have an effect on other buyers.
Other buyers, yeah. My feeling would be. I think it's, I don't know, I'm thrilled to get a couple of potential buyers for, for that, that property.
We've had three, three folks look at it, yes.
I was, I was a little bit hesitant to see what kind of interest they would be for a pretty unique property. But I think you guys are doing a great, if you, do we need a motion or do you just need like a, I think.
I think if I could have some direction on where we could go back as a counteroffer, we could come off of our one forty nine, nine eleven, a small amount. And then take it back to the contract purchaser to see if they would be interested.
All right, I'll make a motion that we allow or authorize town staff to counteroffer. Back to the potential buyer, to the interested party for ten thousand dollars more than what they're asking. No, that's not the right way, that's not what they're asking. I take that motion back, because that is not worded right at all. It's not what they're asking.
Looking at ten thousand dollars coming off of our one forty nine eleven, or we could come down to one thirty nine, nine eleven.
Yes, that's what, okay, let me hear your, Mary, say that.
Say so moved.
So moved.
So just so I have it right, I'll go back to our, our person, and we would come back with a price of one thirty nine, nine eleven.
I thought we talked about it being. Now that she said it, the ten thousand dollars more than what they were offering, was I thought the agreement.
Yeah, I, I think it's totally two things, so, so we're here and they're here, are we coming down ten thousand or are we asking them for ten more than they're offering?
That's what I don't understand.
I, I thought what you were asking for was, we can come ten thousand off our asking price.
I said they're asking, I meant are asking.
Right, are asking.
Yes, are asking is what I meant.
I follow that.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion to authorize town staff to come down ten thousand off of our, our asking price. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second, any discussion? Anybody want to hear Jen repeat the motion?
Oh, please don't make me repeat that one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, Carrie unanimously.
Okay. I abstain because due to me.
Okay, Carrie's four, did you vote, okay, Carrie's four, zero, one abstention. Thank you for the clarification. Discussion of waiving fees by Castlefield Two developer.
Okay, you've all been briefed on this, I'll bring you up to speed real quick. The Castlefield Group is requesting. Financial concessions in the amount of thirty three thousand nine hundred and sixty six dollars in regards to the last three units left to be permitted. Also, they're looking at a reduction in the letter of credit, but actually, you know, we put this out there to you and staff recommends waiving no. No, nothing other permitting fees, and we just want to get that, you know, from mayor and council on that, so. A motion basically not to. To give them any type of concessions on any types of fees.
This is the developer, correct?
That's correct, Castlefield LLC.
I just want to be sure we're clear, okay?
So Steve, just point of clarification, these are, these are the impact fees, is what they're, these are the impact fees?
Yes, correct.
And are, is it your recommendation to not make any change to understand with the impact fees, but also with the release of letter of credit?
The letter of credit, we have to understand that, you know, we put twenty, they put twenty five thousand dollars back for reservicing Hilltop Drive due to construction going in and out. Also five thousand dollars in signage and also six thousand dollars in contingencies. And, you know, they still have to re, they still have three units to build back there, there's still going to be construction traffic on Hilltop. We may make some concessions on, on some of the letter of credit, but we have to take a hard look at that, all the repairs have to be made.
Yeah, as a reminder, that those of us that were around when. The Catholic Church was built. You know, there's some discussions around reducing the impact fees, the decision was made by the council at, at, at that time that we, we, we set the impact fees and we apply them fairly and equally. And we didn't make concessions because these, these are fees and we're already behind in infrastructure, and that's really what these things pay for.
That's correct.
So it is unfortunate, they are expensive, but the, the developers get into the business.
Well, it's a trickle down effect, it definitely affects us, and we have to look at our capital expenses and, you know, our operating expenses.
You know, as nice as the communities in Castlefield and so far, it's not, it's not our business to make them more profitable.
That's correct.
I mean, we, that, that, that's my, my opinion, we, we have, we have to take care of the infrastructure. They made a ton of money, you know, great for them, but we're going to be the ones holding the bag.
Also for the people that have already lived there, they've already had to pay all their in fact fees, correct? They had to pay for everything that everybody's. Right.
That, that's Castlefield one as opposed to Castlefield two, but effectively you do pay, you pay for it in your purchase price.
Right, everybody else had to do it, that doesn't make it, in my opinion, right, that they don't have to do it, just because they're the last three lots. So, do you want to make a motion?
I think so, actually, if I had one suggestion, it would be to make a motion to not waive the impact fees, but allow town staff to work with the developer. To reduce the, the letter of credit as, as necessary. Or as appropriate maybe, in that, in that way, Steve has authorization to, to work with them on that.
You may have to correct me on this.
Say so moved.
I haven't interviewed.
What he said.
You want me to say it? I'll mess that one up too tonight.
So, I make a motion that the town does not waive the fees for the Castlefield Two development. However, the staff has the option to meet with the developer to discuss possibly negotiating the.
Reducing, reducing the letter of credit.
Letter of credit.
We'll examine, you know, to look at if we can reduce the letter of credit.
Yeah, so as they get closer and more things get done, we can work from there. We have a motions or a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, all right, so we have direction there, questions and comments from the community? There's only one person left. Then we'll go to, to committee reports, Councilwoman Smith on final committee report.
Yep, I don't have anything because we didn't have a meeting, but I just want to say it has been wonderful, it's been a great eight years, the staff is amazing, I don't think we could have gotten anybody better, they go above and beyond. It's been a pleasure working with everybody along with, you know, the town and the people, I want to thank everyone that voted for me, you may see me again, so, maybe in two years, we'll see, but thank you, everyone.
Very good, thank you, Melinda, Councilwoman Miller.
So I am in the process of finishing up the Banner City paperwork as best as I can, I have a clarification question to ask MML in regards to that application with restrictions due to COVID. With visitations and that kind of thing, to see what the protocol is, so it is possible, we may not be able to qualify for Banner City this year due to the restrictions by COVID. But I have an email drafted to send, to question that. Also, the quarterly MML meeting is coming up, I believe, next week. In Union Bridge, I will not be able to attend, so if someone is able to attend, that would be fantastic, if not, I understand.
Is it in person?
It is, from the way that I interpret it, it's in person at the. Flood Zone, I think is what it's called, flood something.
Oh, that's right.
Furry, yep.
Just, and one thing on that, I don't know what they're requiring with the schools.
That's where I'm stuck.
If there's not going to be a complete waiver of that, we can probably set something up where I would do like, I'll do a Zoom, one of us can.
Well, and that's what, my email is drafted saying, you know, with the restrictions, the school system's not allowing in person, could we do a virtual? A Zoom, a, a pop in Zoom kind of thing.
And I, and I don't know if they would take his, it's not in the school, but I did, those were like Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts.
Okay, I'll question that, I'll add that in to see if they would switch that or accept that, depending on the situation.
Councilman Pacelli?
Mama, as a reminder, has been renamed North Carroll Business Alliance, there was a meeting back in April, it was very well attended, they seem to have very strong leadership and their lineup of guest speakers is excellent, so I have. High hopes that the organization will get completely back on their feet and move forward.
Councilwoman Howe?
We only have a few activities coming up, the plant swap is this weekend, the drop off is Saturday. The Saturday, May the fifteenth, from four to six P M, and the plant swap itself is May the sixteenth, Sunday, from one to three P M. June the sixth, we have June's first Sunday hike from one to three P M at the Nature Center, and July the fourth, from one to three P M is July's first Sunday hike, and that's it.
Good, one more time, Councilman Wilder.
All right, Planning and Zoning Commission did meet last month, but we just had a quick business meeting, not much to discuss, we are meeting again next week, where we'll have Equine Meadows come in to give us an update where things, things stand. They were having a lot of trouble with stormwater management, so they're going to give us an update on that. As Ryan pointed out, next Tuesday is Election Day, so our meeting is to move to Wednesday, okay. Other than that, I too want to say it's, it's been an honor and a pleasure serving the citizens of the town of Manchester and working with the mayor and council and town staff and our attorney. Town has done amazing things and continues to do amazing things, so, but after. I guess four terms as, and council and a stint on planning and zoning, it's time to let, let, let us take a little break. I've been very proud to be part of this town, so thank you.
Yep, and as others said, thank you both for your service to the town and, you know, town's in a pretty good spot and that's a reflection of everybody that's come together and. You know, work, work towards the same goals, even if we didn't always agree on how to get there, so, thank you for me personally, and it's been a pleasure, you know, since sixteen years, I guess we've, we've done this together, right?
About each, or twenty years, you and I have served on planning and zoning first.
Can we have another retirement party? Like the last one? Yes.
Just a couple of reminders, as Dale has said.
Can I read Trent's last report?
Oh, yeah.
Not a doing proud, I will not do it as well as he does, but this will be Trent's last meeting, he is at a music, I believe, a chorus concert tonight. So May eleventh, his council report, academics reviews are being held for AP tests which begin next week, state testing for English and algebra was held last week for extracurriculars. The substitute for the musical, the Maverick Musical Adventure, has been released on the Maverick Theater YouTube channel. The Drama Club is also holding several events like the thespies, and he spelled that out for us, so we don't mess that one up, and a Q and A for the senior directed one acts. The NHS Environmental Committee is selling earth friendly canvas bags, the Athletics Boosters is currently selling spirit wear, spring sports began last month, and for community activities. Celebrations like Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, Mental Health Week, Teacher Appreciation Week, and School Lunch Hero Day are or were being celebrated for the month of May. The last chance to order twenty twenty one yearbooks, Spirit Week has begun with little extra events, Monday they had a virtual five K. Teacher superlatives and a virtual pep rally, there's twelve more days for seniors, I'm sure Trent is counting down, and twenty five more days for all students.
Also, congratulations to Trent for earning his Eagle Scout. And turning eighteen, I guess. So, a couple of reminders, election next Tuesday here in this room, seven, eight A M to eight P M. The reorganizational meeting, which is in our charter. Is Wednesday, May twenty sixth at seven thirty. Next council meeting of the new council is Tuesday, June eighth, seven thirty, I may have a conflict on that reorganizational meeting, so we'll have to figure out.
Because of the, you know, that's the same night as, as the parade.
The parade, senior parade.
Yeah, I might have a conflict with that too. So. Yeah, I guess that's all going on still, right? So we, we may, you know, if I'm not there, I think what we do is to swear people in, and typically, and then reelect council vice president, so we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll, we'll talk once I get a little bit more information.
I just want to say one thing, we have, the BZA should have been that night, Wednesday, the last Wednesday, so I had to change my BZA case this month to the Tuesday. And now you're going to cancel the Wednesday?
I know.
But anyway, we are having a border zoning appeals hearing for the solar field on Lamont's property, remember the ordinance that we just passed recently? He's coming in to have a, a zoning hearing to see if he can get conditional use to put that solar field there. So that will be on Tuesday, the twenty.
Twenty fifth?
Fifth, right.
Anything else for this group, the motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
That was Jen and who? You, Melinda?
Um, Vince.